How would you say that last name?
Marky.
Marky?
All right, we're on now.
It does this all the time. It never does it anywhere else except when I commit it.
Good evening, residents of Litchfield, and welcome to the February eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen school board meeting of the start of the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible).
(inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(inaudible) we have these high school student representatives that we're going to move by our school board comments.
Same with Mr. Duer, who I'm pretty sure has had a long day, many long days of late.
(inaudible).
Summary of non-public action from February fourth, two thousand and fifteen. Mrs. York made a motion to approve the agreement with the LEA, Spindel second, motion carried four zero zero. Mrs. Spindel made a motion to approve the non-public action in January twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen, as written, Mrs. York.
Says Mrs. York.
Says it, I'm sorry.
That's right. So, Mr. York, second, the motion carried, five zero zero. We have no presentations or recognitions. Correspondence?
We have one from Mr. Bascucci.
I would say we have quite a few correspondence since last time.
I only got one.
They go back to the last board meeting, two weeks ago, there were several from Mr. Miller.
Oh, yeah, there we go.
Go back a few weeks.
Highlighted most of them. I know there's one, I'll go backwards, I'll jump around here. There's one from Lori Gandia, inviting everyone on the school board to the Pad Jewett Volunteer Appreciation Day.
You want me to scroll through?
Pardon me?
You want me to do them?
You have them?
No. I think I probably have less than you do.
You what?
I probably have less than you do, because I'm not the chair, so, oh, wait. I went back way too far.
I'll jump in between you then. I know there was one from Dennis Miller asking about the report required by the policy CM. I've spoken with Dr. Cochran and have responded to Mr. Miller, that Dr. Cochran is working on his three-year plan, and hopefully by the end of the school year, he'll have that to present to the board.
The next one was a question about the policy, BEDG, having a secretary here in non-public.
Yep. And I responded to him on that one also, that the policy I have in front of me does not specify that it has to be a secretary, as long as someone has taken minutes.
There was a question from Mr. Miller about edit dates on some documents that were provided, and we did respond to that one, I have a response on that.
Yeah.
Dr. Cochran, I think, responded with Michelle's comments about software saving.
Yep. He was questioning whether or not the minutes, things were changed in the minutes, but it's just how they're...
Agendas.
Agendas, I'm sorry.
Agendas, that's right.
Change the minutes.
I think I'm getting close. I think that might be all of them. You've got Lori's. I better remember the other ones, I think that's it.
I believe that was it, for the whole board. I have Jason Smith for the whole board, I don't know. Start putting these out before I come. You already mentioned the one from Chris Bascucci, right?
I did not.
Chris Bascucci had sent an email to the school board, giving his opinion of the Attorney General.
(inaudible).
He was in disbelief of what the Attorney General had said. I think that might have been it. If I missed any of, whoever's out there, just remind me, and I'll see if I can find Approval of draft minutes from two, four, fifteen.
Make a motion for the minutes.
Second.
Any conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Epstein. Five zero zero. And we have the draft minutes from two, ten, fifteen.
Make a motion for the minutes.
Second.
Further conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero zero. Whoops, no.
No.
Epstein. Four zero one, sorry. Superintendent's comments? All right, we'll go right to our school reps. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for having us. So, got in, said administration have set up this program, and it's to help struggling students. And what it does is, like, these students that wish to have help, they go see Guidance or Mr. Hicks, and what they do is, it's to set up, like, a kind of program with, like, a student tutor, and this kind of helps them with their classes, and, you know, help them through the classes. And, because, you know, since Campbell's a competency-based school, you know, it kind of helps them, you know, see the competencies and kind of distinguish what they need more, like, help in. And this, this relationship with the student tutor will kind of take the stress off their shoulders a little bit, you know, and it also helps them develop a relationship, so, like, when they see them in the halls, you know, kind of more like a friendly encounter.
So, does students volunteer to be a part of it, or?
Um, yes, yeah, NHS, you know, sure, or what am I saying, National Honor Society.
Okay. And they meet, like, during class, like, study time, or they meet after school, or?
Study time.
That's what's going down right now, Campbell.
That's the, the big thing.
All the time.
You're hardly ever here.
All the snow days, you know.
Don, we're having school tomorrow, right? Still going up?
Yeah, I think we determined, after, I think below twelve inches, we're going to school.
(inaudible).
At this, at this point, I think my wife is requiring me to leave my laptop at work instead of taking it home, so we can't cancel, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
You.
Bring us up to Tom. You're up next.
Actually.
(inaudible).
You just want me to brief them on what's been going on, right? Just want me to brief them on what's going on.
Hello, I'm Tom Doer, I'm the new director of technology, and it's been an interesting five weeks, to say the least. Part of the issues that we're experiencing at GMS and LMS, and probably going to be experiencing it at the high school as well, is we have a product called VMware. VMware is what runs the virtual machines, which runs the virtual servers through the entire infrastructure. I found out that it was set up incorrectly, and it's actually been crashing. So, I have been on the phone with the VMware support several nights trying to get it resolved. Have GMS resolved, have LMS resolved, and I'm still in the process of trying to get the high school resolved as well. What we're finding out is that it was set up incorrectly to begin with, and the database that holds the events was filling up. Once the database fills up, the system shuts down. The system shuts down, you can't log in. So, we're having some issues with that, and that's being resolved. The biggest drawback that I'm finding as well is that there are some issues with the wireless network. The wireless network is woefully inadequate for the bandwidth that's being required to go through it. The access points are placed in the hallway, but all the students that need it are in the classrooms. It's extremely difficult for the signal to get through concrete reinforced walls and steel rims around the doors to get a signal strength in the room that's adequate enough for a lot of people to be using it. I've been running some reports on it and some analysis, and finding that they're actually being dropped in the middle of their practice tests, as an example, at LMS. They'll be testing along, and all of a sudden, they just lose signal strength altogether. So, I'm in the process of trying to get them to reconfigure the testing environment, so they'll be testing in the library, on the thin clients, and the laptops that have the wireless access points in that area, and the cafeteria. There is two access points available in there that will help a little bit better. But in the classrooms themselves, the carts just, just do not work adequately, there's just not strong enough signals getting into those areas. Now, as you know, that was a section on the budget for improving our wireless connectivity during the next fiscal year, and as soon as that's approved, I've already got teams that are doing an evaluation, just give us a hand on what exactly we need for getting this done correctly. With the one-to-one initiative, my main concern is that all the freshmen are going to be having wireless devices, and then the year after that, the next group, the next group, the next group, and eventually, the entire high school is going to be in a wireless-type environment where all these devices are going to be trying to connect all at one time. Our current network setup is not going to support that. We definitely have to have that infrastructure in place to do it.
Have you checked locations within the high school?
Oh, yes.
Dr. Cochran had mentioned that to us one of the last meetings.
Yes. I, I have a device on my phone that actually lets me monitor the signal strength of the actual output for the wireless adapters, the access points. And, for example, there's a guidance counselor upstairs on the second floor, she'll be working along, and all of a sudden, gets disconnected from the network and has to re-log in on her machine when she tries to do outlook. Well, I found out through my probe that there's no wireless signal getting into her room. That's the issue, because her wireless adapter is down the hallway about forty feet, so there's just not enough signal strength getting into our area. And this, this is common now in a lot of the other areas. We have some classrooms that are upstairs that are double classrooms, if you will, that there's no way the signal's getting in there the way it should for adequate signal strength.
So, how are you going to solve those problems?
Tom, could you share that, our conversation about where the repeaters are?
Yes.
Why we're having the issues?
Right now, the repeaters, the wireless access points are in the hallways. What I have proposed for the team that's doing the inspection on it is, I'm actually going to be putting the wireless access points in the classrooms. That's where they'll get the signal strength out, where you'll be able to have more people connecting to the stronger devices that has more bandwidth, faster throughput, and a lot of, higher signal strength to be able to transmit through the entire classroom. The double classrooms, we're actually going to be putting two access points, one at each end of the room. The access point is fairly strong for the ones that I'm looking at for the models, but if you get more than twenty-five people connecting at any one time, it brings it right down. So, there is a capacity that they have on these devices.
We want per classroom, I think?
One per classroom, basically, yes.
So, some of it is, is configuration, and, and some of it is, is just how stuff is being used. So, if the access point is in the ceiling, out in the hallway, and students are in here, then you have a concrete block wall directly in between the access point. Now, it was an attempt to try and serve both sides of the hallway, so you put it in the middle, but Tom's tests are basically showing that, that...
It just doesn't work.
You may have to basically double the, the Wi-Fi density.
Does that mean students won't be able to use their phones in the hallway? He was smiling when he was talking about moving the model, I was thinking, okay.
I'm sure.
In the hallway, it works great, but if you get too far down the hallway, it shuts off. That's why you see them walking in the hallway, and all of a sudden, you got the phones out.
These guys are going to be selling out the secrets.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it be possible students have to go to the washroom about the same time that they're checking their phone?
Yeah, that's probably what's happening, but, but that's the reason why the wireless is not working very well here in the high school, especially at LMS.
So, what will that do for our testing for the third to the eighth grade? I'm hoping, in Campbell, we can get them in a classroom that is a little better for the eighth, for the...
Well, we're going to be using two media labs, which are automatically hooked up with wired networks, so that's going to alleviate some of it. The mobile carts, we're going to pray that we get good signal strength in the rooms that they're going to be using, but right now, I need to test exactly which rooms they're going to utilize to see if there's going to be signal strength getting in there.
Are we going to be able, do we have enough time? I figure Frank will find the money, but if not, do we have the resources to, and time to move devices into the classrooms at LMS so that they, they have those?
No, not at this time, because it would not only be relocating these access points, it would also be recabling to get to these different locations. There's, there's not enough time, and I don't have enough money on hand to be able to do that. What I am doing is, I've coordinated with a technical team that's going to come in and evaluate the wireless network to see if they can actually throttle it up. Right now, there's about five or six SSIDs, which is a point for connecting into a network in each one of the areas. If we cut that down to one SSID for the secure area, if you will, and one SSID for the guests, which is all they need for getting out for testing, that'll increase the signal strength that's available for that access point. So, it reduces the amount of throughput that's going to be on each channel and consolidate it, if you will, concentrate it into that one area. They're going to assist me in doing that.
I mean, the biggest key is that we, you know, for our youngest students, I mean, they're the ones that'll get frustrated probably the quickest.
Yes.
And, and lose interest in, in the process. I mean, everybody gets frustrated when they keep getting, I mean, we...
It hurts when I get disconnected.
...in here, so.
Yes.
At this point in time, all three schools have testing schedules, but they're based on a set of assumptions, and Mr. Doer and the teachers and administration are constantly working on those. A lot of this information has been come fairly late in, in the game, quite honestly, and I have to compliment the, the staff. Teachers, paras, administration have been working really hard on this, and, and I'm very, very thankful. I mean, they have a busy enough task without this overlaying on top, but a lot of time has been put in. Every time something new comes up, we then have to go back and check how we're doing, are there any implications? So, the LMS test earlier this week or late last week, we did pretty well, but we hadn't downloaded and installed the secure browsers required for smarter balance. We downloaded those, they're a little bit pulling more bandwidth, and so now, you know, it, it's a matter of as we add the pieces. Now, conversely, there were some issues that we're having with accessibility issues that were fixed when we went to the secure browsers.
Yes.
And so, now, what we're going to have to do is, as we're going forward, try to, to arrange the testing environment so that gives the students a good positive experience, we get valid results, and it may mean extending testing times, fewer students testing at a time. And I have to say, I, I really appreciate the, the time that Mr. Doer and, and the teachers and guidance counselors and admin has put into this. It's been quite extensive. We'll never have to do it like this again, but for this year, it, it, we're still going to be creating things as we go, and, you know, we may get partway through and realize, well, we may have to drop a classroom at the, you know, from four classes down to three, or, or whatever. And of course, as Mr. Doer pointed out, LMS is going to be the biggest challenge, because every student is tested.
Yeah.
Quick question on the thin clients at GMS. Back in the, it was probably a couple months ago now, we installed the program on there, because we're going to do an after-school program on game coding for the kids. It was really laggy, just trying to use the program. Is that part of the problem?
That's part of, that's part of the network issue.
That might be...
It's not just the wireless network that's having issues, I'm also identifying that the wired network has issues. There is something that's on the network that is bottlenecking everything. I don't know if it's the spanning tree that's coming from the different switches, or if it's just something that's just doing a broadcast and just tying up the network. They're bringing in an analyzer tool that's going to connect into our network and actually identify where those areas are. Because I've noticed myself, you could be on the network, and all of a sudden, it just stops. You'd be in the middle of something, and it just, just stops. There's, there's no signal, there's no bandwidth going through, there's no nothing. So, it's wired and wireless experiencing those issues. And I'm getting that analyzed, so we can get that resolved.
If I can also hand out a compliment to Mr. Doer. The informal feedback that I've gotten from teachers, paras, staff about his ability to work through and find solutions for the end users, the feedback has been overwhelmingly positive, and I think people have been very pleased with, certainly Tom's work ethic, because when I start getting emails and phone calls that early on Saturday, Sunday mornings, and Tom's at GMS trying to fix this situation, you know, we know that, that he's certainly putting in his effort. But people have been very appreciative, I think, of his perspective on the end user. And, and when we had a very first conversation, I, Tom's response to me was, if, if, if the technology doesn't work for the end user, it doesn't work. Period. And that's really the approach that he's, he's... So, he's provided robotics with computers that they could use, provided teachers on duty at the lunch with laptops that they could use, very open to requests, and, and, you know...
Yeah, I'm not here to support me, I'm here to support them. That's the name of the game.
Welcome that attitude.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the entry.
School board comments? All right. We'll go right to the BA report for February two thousand and fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to give the committee a kind of an update.
Do you want to let the student representatives go?
Yep, they can leave anytime they want.
Intriguing.
I don't know, you might want to see my... I got pictures.
No pictures.
I got snow pitches.
Go pass the word, the phones won't be able to be used in hallways pretty soon.
I'd like to give the committee, if I could, an update on snow activities and the recent activity we had here at the high school that caused the evacuation of the second floor the other day. If you could open up the snow pitches, and I didn't know what else to entitle them, so I apologize for it, but I think some of the pitches will give you a perspective as to what our staff and contractors have been doing over the past few days. That first picture by narration, I've got some, if somebody in, anybody in the audience wants to see what you're looking at, I do have some copies here. That is actually the second floor here at CHS, and to put it in perspective, this roof was pretty much clear after the last storm, the most recent storm that we had. This is the result of that storm. You can see, that is Aaron Stapleton to your right and Dave Ross to your left. They are actually standing on four feet of snow. So, if you look at that window, you see the bottom of the window, that snow drift, now this is, again, the result of the last storm, because all these windows were clear. That drift was, is over both Dave, you can see Aaron to your right and Dave to your left, those windows were totally clogged with snow. You couldn't see out the windows. The problem with that is, is the window is a second egress, emergency egress for the classroom, so we needed to clear that out immediately. And again, you can see the depth of which they are shoveling the snow away from the windows at CHS. The second picture kind of gives you, it looks like the polar cave, Winter Polar Cave. That is actually Aaron standing next to the snow drift that piled up against the, the northeastern part of the building. The third picture, that is a result of Dave and Aaron and, and Joe Underwood from GMS were here all day on Monday working to clear the snow away from the windows. I also want to acknowledge Kevin Lynch, building inspector here in, in Litchfield, Ed Dalton, who's our snow contractor, did return my call, still talking to us, and, and John Mark, Marky, who's a local contractor that has done a lot of work for the district, he was the contractor working at LMS last summer when we had to replace the doors and do a lot of work there. John was able to, at, at our call Monday morning, organize a crew of eight workers to come here, and basically, they took all the snow that was moved away from the windows and took that load off of, off of the second story here at CHS. Ed Dalton came in with his front end lawyer that you see in the parking lot, he came at our call, every time we needed him, he'd show up and take that snow away and put it over near the baseball field. So, for the most part, John's group and our group finished up the high school today. All the snow drifts, all the windows are clear. Kevin Lynch has been through all three buildings numerous occasions since Monday. He, I just got off the phone with him at five o'clock this evening, and he said the schools are safe, the snow load is not a problem, and, and he complimented the staff and, and the contractors doing the work here. The work will continue tomorrow at LMS, GMS to, to take again the snow drifts away from the windows there. And you just see some pitches of the result of us clearing, that's what it looks like on top. And a nighttime picture, they worked here Monday night till eight o'clock, working on the roof.
Real quick on GMS?
Yep.
I got up, of course, this morning, drove by.
Yep.
The parking, because there's limited parking there, but the parking spots at the end of the horseshoe are basically dumping ground for snow right now, so we're losing probably, I don't know, some response back there. There might be parking issues there right now. I don't know if Andy could move it to the field or something.
Well, I'll take a look at it. Yep, yep. He cleared out the driveway as you were coming out of the school, because you couldn't see up or down.
Oh, I saw that today.
So, yeah, he's going to, so he's going to be over there tomorrow, we'll mention to him if he can free up some parking spots over there.
Our plow guy for the, for the schools, Eddie Dalton, Dalton Fire Officer, very responsive. The very first day that we had the really bad banks, I was down here before schools opened and, and drove around and inspected GMS and LMS, and before I came up to the high school and drove around and talked to all the facilities folks. And when I pulled out of the, as, as you probably were, when you pulled out of the parking lot at GMS and tried to look both ways, the banks were, I mean, the bus drivers might have been able to see above it, but not, and so, a couple of quick calls to Jack Pinciero and to Eddie Dalton, and they communicated, and they figured out who was closest and had the equipment, and went down and knocked those down as best they could, and, you know, the communication between the town and the facilities folks and Mr. Dalton has been very good, and, and, you know, I think we've, you know, handled things relatively well.
We didn't want to leave GMS out of the pitches, that's Dave at GMS.
I said, I noticed one of those.
Yeah, that's trying to clear, and that's from a classroom looking out, obviously.
Those are some sort of, that went up against, I don't know, right?
Yep, yep. So, they're all gone. And I'll leave the last two pitches for, for a few moments. So, again, the, for the most part, the roof flowed, the schools are safe, we'll be dealing with removing snow, LMS, GMS, probably through Friday of this weekend, and keeping our fingers crossed on Sunday night's potential. We should be, we are in real good shape with the buildings.
Is there a plow contract, is that a fixed contract?
It is. That's why I said, he did return my call. He's still, he, I called him, he was here at the school with us, and he told me, he asked, what do you want me to do? Whatever you want me to do, I'll get the machine cranked up, we'll come in here, and he started removing all the snow away from the building. He was, yeah, so the, obviously, the work that he's doing is over and above that contract, but, you know, the price that he quoted is very reasonable, extremely reasonable compared to what I think other contractors may have charged for that very same service, so.
Goes both ways. You get a year, there's no snow, and they still get paid.
Yeah, it's a role that dies from both sides. Yep. And it is a three-year contract.
Yeah.
The last two pitches that I have here, let me tell you what happened the other day here. My days are all mixed up, it was yesterday. We had a situation here on the second floor, and basically, the two pitches you're, you're looking at, that is called a heat, a heat coil. It looks very similar to the radiator of a car. What happened was, on the second floor, every classroom in the ductwork has a heat coil leading into the room. The air goes through it, those little things you see there, I've learned all this, the great stuff, that heats the air going through. What happened yesterday afternoon in the second floor here at CHS, one of the heat coils froze up. Why did it freeze up? We're still trying to determine. We think there's an air duct that stuck open somewhere, it was bringing too much cold air into the system. It froze it up, then we introduced the hot water to it, it cracked those two pipes, and basically, we had a, a big water leak. Within, I would say, fifteen minutes, we had the custodial staff cleaning it up, we had to shut down the classroom, we, we were able to stop the water flow, and it had nothing to do with snow, had nothing to do with roofs, it, it was simply this part of the heating system let go, and we lost some water, probably around, maybe thirty gallons of water came out of the system before we were able to bring it, to shut it down.
Probably around maybe thirty gallons of water came out of the system before we were able to bring it, to shut it down. So that is, that is a picture of the fixed and cleaned heat coil. And it kind of goes a little bit about duct cleaning and so on and so forth. And in the last picture there, it doesn't do it justice, but that's what the heating coil looked like when we removed it from the ceiling. As you can see, you really can't tell by the picture, but if you, by comparison, your heating, your vent, your washer and dryer and your dryer, when the vent needs to be cleaned, you can take and peel off all the lint. That, that, that complexed the problem that we have with the heating coil, that is all basically full of lint and dirt. And the air wasn't getting through. So consequently, that's where you get the work orders from classrooms to say that we're not getting any heat. So again, it was, Honeywell was on site that afternoon, they removed the part. We are now just putting it all back together and that classroom should be back in line hopefully tomorrow. If not tomorrow, certainly.
Is there maintenance we should be doing to clean it regularly?
Yep, well, part of it would be air duct cleaning, because that is part of the air duct service was, is they, they not only go in and clean the air duct itself, but they go and they find each of these heating coils and they, what you're supposed to do is go in there with a vacuum and basically vacuum it out, take all that, that lint. Now, why is there so much lint buildup? That goes to the filters. And the preventative maintenance on that is, my understanding is we've been changing the filters here probably three to four times a year. We probably should be doing it something like ten to twelve times a year. So basically, on a monthly rotation, we should be taking those vents out, those filters out and putting new filters in, which will obviously diminish the amount of lint buildup you have in these, these heating coils, so. But it's also a cleaning part, that's part of the contract, what they do is they go in and not only do just clean the ducts themselves, but they go into these heating coils and they'll, they'll clean them up and they'll also take a look at them to make sure that there are no leaks. Because they do, from time to time, to spring up a small leak.
Yeah. When Dave Ross showed me that and he started to pull on it, if you think of felt fabric, about an eighth or more inch thick, completely light blocking, nothing goes, I mean, so it's not the light stuff that you get through your drive, but it really looked like somebody had taken a piece of felt and jammed it in and shoved it in as hard as you could. No light was going through. I can't imagine how any air or heat action was going on. Because the whole thing is, you've got hot water in the pipes and the air blowing through there gets heated and heats up the room. So the efficiency of the system has to be pretty marginal.
Okay, now we'll move on to the BA report. I did provide you with, and I won't go through them today, but I did want to give the board copies of two recently completed audits that, one is in draft form, which is our financial audit. That's the LSD draft audit letter and the Litchfield School District draft audit report. That's our financial audit report ending June thirtieth of two thousand fourteen. It is in draft form, I have reviewed it. And if you have any questions, or as you review the draft, if you have any questions or comments, you would like to email that to me. The only piece that is missing is the piece that we put in to the audit report, which is called the management discussion and analysis. And that will also be presented to you as a board prior to that being remitted to the auditor for final, final version of the audit report. The two thousand fifteen food service audit is, the New Hampshire Department of Education actually came in to do a compliance audit on the food service program for the district, all three schools inclusive. And again, I won't go through the report, but if you have any questions or you'd like some additional information on that, that is the audit findings from New Hampshire DOE. And once we have our response to that audit submitted to DOE, I'll also provide you with, as a board, with a copy of that as well.
Do you want to talk about your report itself?
Sure. Yep. Financial report, I did provide you with an overview, executive financial report dated as of today. I wanted to bring a couple of things current. One, one area of concern that we, we have two areas of concern right now in the, in the salaries and benefits, which is the overtime budget and the long-term substitute budget. We pretty much have expended for the entire year, the appropriations. So that obviously is an area of concern. But otherwise, again, the budget expenditures and the accumbrances are pretty much following where they, where we expect them to be. We are taking a look at areas that we will, starting next month, start making some appropriation changes in the budget. Primarily, that's in the area of textbook, new and replacement and furniture and equipment, new and replacement as well. The last page of the report is, Mr. York had asked us to see if we could kind of fine tune the budget transfer report that we were, we were asked by the auditors to provide you on a monthly basis. And again, the last page of that financial report gives you more detail than what previously was submitted to you on a monthly basis. It provides you with, and it's a lot smaller report because we gave you a copy of all, any and all transfers. These are just financial transfers for the budget. So it does give you more detail as to what account is coming from, what account is going to. And over to the right columns will give you some explanation as to why, why those transfers were made.
Any questions for Frank?
Sweet. On another, we received an email from Frank Byron yesterday. Page five of that report, I don't know if anybody has that open, but it's reflecting total tuition and transportation reimbursements by district. And it shows that our, this year we're receiving six thousand and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents, so I don't know if that's six million eight or ninety-three thousand. But this year we're only receiving, or coming here, it's going to be four, eight, six, seven. Is that a big reduction that we should be concerned about, or is that just a two thousand dollar reduction?
I would need to look at that more closely, but I believe it's just a two thousand dollar reduction. It's in the transportation line. I can, I can take the board detail look at that and give the board an email on that follow-up.
Do you have a general idea of what it stands at this time, if there'll be any balance left from the budget at the end of the year?
Mr. York, it's awful early to start asking me that, but.
It's almost March.
I can tell you that the snow operations that we've got going on right now is probably going to cost us somewhere in the area of unbudgeted fifteen thousand dollars. So I would say we are trending towards having some unassigned fund balance towards the end of the year.
It sounds like if Mr. Duer was still here right now, he'd be like reaching his hands out for some of that money.
He already is reaching. I see the superintendent with four sets of hands now.
Yeah. He's got Tom on his side, does he?
Tom is on the other, yeah. Tom has learned that very quickly. But we will, again, we've got some areas of the budget that we'll be re-appropriating.
So unencumbered salary was two hundred and, salaries and benefits unencumbered was three ninety-five.
Right.
Do you picture that standing pretty still? I mean, is that, we know the staff is at this point, right?
Yeah, we're pretty, we're pretty stable. We have maybe a few para openings and, but for the most part, we'll probably see that number remain pretty consistent throughout the, towards the end of the year. We have a few open positions, but again, we had a couple of positions that have gone non-filled. If you recall, two major positions, we had the facilities director here and the facilities director from LMS, we did not replace. We kind of, so there's, that right there was probably a third of that figure right there. Yeah, or at least some, a good chunk of it. But I would say that that probably is going to remain pretty consistent between now and the end of the year.
Anything else for Frank? Thank you, Frank.
You're welcome, thank you. Yes, that's right. I do have for you.
There should be a few cover sheets in there.
Thank you, Michelle, for reminding me.
Do you want them to sign in the blue or black ink?
Doesn't matter.
Is there anything else on the ballots, or is that a non-public item, or?
It's not a public, it's very public, actually.
Do you have a signed ballot?
We do not.
No. But Gordon and I spent most of the day preparing for and being in court.
Are we any closer to a signed ballot?
I believe we are.
Can you say what the next steps are in the public session, or?
Our attorney, Gordon Graham, was in court today to file a writ of mandamus to require the to either sign the ballot or resign by twelve noon tomorrow, or be charged with contempt. The approval was given and that action is being filed, being delivered to the clerk this evening by Litchfield PD.
I know we have to have absentee ballots by tomorrow?
Should be mailed out by the twenty-fourth, which means that worst case scenario, the options in the, in the mandamus that the judge granted were either signed or resignation. If there's a resignation, we would have to quickly call a meeting and the board would have to vote someone else to be eligible to sign. I've already contacted school board moderator, Mr. Regan, who is available and has indicated that he would perform that function if the board so desired. But it could be anybody who would need that, that requirement, so. It looks as though.
An update on the ballots, so Michelle was able, has sent the voting ballot to the printer.
To proof, yeah.
To, she's waiting on her proof coming back.
I have the proof, I'm just waiting. I called her and told her not until I tell her.
So once we have the signature, just the signature gets sent to the good old printer?
Mm-hmm.
Who's gonna just kind of put that signature on it. So we're all set to go on our end as soon as we get a signature. We'll be set to get, at least enough to get the absentee ballots out.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yep, and we can overnight them.
And we can overnight.
In the end, if the writ, if the writ of mandamus is ignored, it is a contempt charge. We're still waiting. Clerk was unable to be in court today. The court tried to contact him to see if he wanted to appear before the judge. That option will still exist. If so, then Mr. Graham and I will be spending some more time in Nashua Superior Court tomorrow. And if one of the two options chosen as directed by the court is not followed, then we still have no remedy. The person would be in contempt of court. And they normally react relatively quickly in this. Our hope is that we will be in a situation very shortly to be able to move forward with the ballots, be able to mail out the absentee ballots in plenty of time for the, to be taken action. But the, ultimately, it's up to the clerk to do what was asked by the Attorney General's office last Thursday and Friday. And that is your choices, quite simply, are to sign the ballot or resign, or you're in violation of your oath of office. That's where we are.
Hopefully, we can get a result.
So has Gordon reviewed the default and sent off on it? I mean, I know we've already had his opinion on it, but I mean, given this, did we double down on the opinion from Gordon? On the default itself, or?
That's not an issue, that's not, the issue here is clearly that the, the role of the school district clerk.
Oh, I know that's the issue.
No, no, no. The question is that the individual is raising concerns over what's in the default budget. We should be extremely sure that we are.
That's, I guess that's what I was going with, yeah.
Correct, but we've made assumptions that our attorney would defend. So yes, that's happened, or no, it hasn't?
Yes, it has.
Yes, that's happened, okay.
Has Gordon reviewed?
He's, he said, he's got a copy of the default budget, he's seen our calculation.
And he received those at the deliberative on Saturday, the court?
If you're looking for an opinion, we haven't asked, the district hasn't asked Gordon for an opinion on the default budget.
He has it, is he booked at it, I guess? Has he, has he seen the calculations?
He's seen the calculations.
He's doesn't.
He hasn't reviewed it.
He hasn't, basically raised concerns, or?
Nope. And again, the key from Gordon is that the district has been consistent over the years on how they calculate the default budget. Said to make sure that, what's being contested, my understanding is the salaries and benefits area, to which, you know, you folks have received that and those are basically contractual obligations by the collective bargaining agreement as well as the para educator increase due specifically to the I, the IEP students.
Those are the only things in there, right?
That's the only thing that's in there. We can certainly ask Gordon to give us a review and an opinion. I don't know how available he will be over the next week. I believe he's going to be out of time.
I think he gave us, he sent us something recently, or I think he forwarded something in recently anyway, but.
He's provided, I think, an opinion to the board.
A couple different, numerous.
Couple of years ago, yep. And basically, just exercising caution and items that would be determined to be one-time expenditure. And things that, same appropriation as last year. Again, as we reviewed the last time, the biggest change other than one-time expenditures, we're taking out all the warrant articles that provides, for instance, the security. And I think the largest increase again was in the salaries and benefit area.
I think that's why we spent a time last week going through it again, just to make certain that, or the week before.
Yeah, I can certainly ask.
Yeah, I mean, I feel comfortable with it, but I just.
Yeah, no, I, I.
Given the.
Yep.
Intense focus on it.
We can ask Attorney Graham to take another look at our calculations and those items that were excluded from that calculation as well.
Anything else? Bring us on to enrollment.
There are two files. One is the update and we have a continu-, that's on the website. And the other, I just emailed you a few minutes ago and it shows the, where we are with next year's kindergarten and grade one enrollments. The pattern continues, slight increase. If you look at from September twenty-sixth to January thirtieth, overall district-wide increase of ten students, four of those have been in the pre-K program, which means at least two of those would have been identification of three or four-year-old that in special education students. So an increase of six, we're averaging somewhere around an increase of eight during the year. And as I say, a drop of more than that over the summer, the last couple of years, with a general trend down in the range of one to two percent a year. The other document shows where we are. I know there was concern about whether or not we would need additional teachers for first grade beyond the four that we have at this point in time. And if you look at, we have the projections for next year and then the previous, data from the previous years from roughly the same time, end of, end of January, the, end of January enrollments, if you look at where we are, we're at thirty-nine registrations for kindergarten and sixty-seven for grade one. This year's sixty-seven equates to last year's sixty-eight, the year before that was a sixty, seventy-one. The seventy-one projected to a ninety-four. Remember, there was a very big surge at the end on that. But at this point in time, sixty is significantly below. And so if you follow the trend of, you know, last year's results, which were four classes of reasonable size and even the, you know, the sixty as well, we appear to be within the range that we would expect to have four classes. You never know what happens between now and September, but right, right now, it looks as though we have that roughly consistent class size as the two prior years.
So, we have, as of right now, sixty-seven registrations.
Sixty-seven.
We still have seventy-six kindergarteners, right?
There is, the way we report that.
Seventy-three.
We recount kinder-, in, in, in kindergarten, we report morning kindergarten, afternoon kindergarten, and there are some students who are in both, and so they're double-counted.
Ah.
So, the actual number is, uh, something like, uh, sixty-three.
Sixty-three, okay.
So, it's, it's not the seventy-something that, and I, I checked on that. And we actually changed a couple of years ago, apparently, how we report kindergarten enrollments in this report. At one point in time, it was only, uh, on the, on a head count. I think what likely happened was, um, as, as, uh, we began to work with, with the students, we identified more students who could benefit more from full-day kindergarten, and therefore, that number has gone up. So, maybe we were double-counting them before, but I think we had nearly as many students in, in that area. So, I had Barbara pull the, pull all the data on that, but we don't know. So, we know for this year, it's actually about eight kids who are in double-counted in that seventy-some, eight or nine.
So, the thirty-nine registrations for kindergarten right now, is that in line with what has been in the past at this time, or?
Well, we're at thirty-nine compared to the forty-four, forty-two, forty-five. So, if you look at the kindergarten trend from, you know, the, the eleven, twelve class downs, it's gone from sixty-six at the end of, to fifty-one, forty-five, forty-two, forty-two, uh, forty-four, rather. The last four or five years, if you look at the correlation between, uh, live births, uh, four years prior in kindergarten, it's been a very strong correlation, same with the one. Although this year's, there seems to be a divergence with more mobility in. Because the, the, uh, original projections were for, uh, grade one actually be lower than that. But as Mr. Barker points out, the kindergarten registrations were higher than expected. But, and so, the, the registrations are actually higher than it, than projected, and on top of that, there's some double.
I think it's the committee reports. Not sure if anyone met.
The negotiating team met.
Yes, we did.
And I will tell you that we came to no agreement.
Were you talking about what we negotiated?
We were, um, trying to solve the, um, our issue at LMS for the seventh and eighth graders. And, um.
Just, I, I know people have asked me what's going on, because I guess people know this is the situation there, so.
It never got off the, the, uh, table.
Article eight, uh, G and I, uh, working conditions, work year for teachers and work day for teachers.
What, um, basically, give you guys a quick, we met, um, we met last week on Tuesday. And, um, the school board presented their ideas. We did not receive a, um, any offer or counteroffer back from the, um, LEA at that time. There seemed to be a little confusion, um, on that process, and, and that may have been, could have easily been the fault of the school board for not, um, providing proper guidance, to the administration of, of, through that process, of what we, of what our expectations were, which then could have been communicated down into the schools and then also down into the teachers, so that everybody was a little bit more equipped to, uh, respond to that process. So, did that, as it was, we did have a, a discussion for about ninety minutes. And, um, and left it with the LEA to, um, come up with a proposal to what was a basic foundation, presented back in December, um, which wasn't as well-presented as, as it needed to be as a reflection of what the board's, um, wishes were. And, um, uh, they came, uh, back with a, uh, proposal. There was a, um, clause that they had put into, uh, their negotiation that, um, basically would have, um, if we, um, their, their clause was that if we used the six hours of, of hours, that there was not a reciprocal day of teaching that still had, in this case, a, a teacher workshop at the end of the year to make up for the hundred-and-eighty dollars.
We probably, I don't know if we can talk about.
So.
Can we, I guess, one second, can we even get to that level of detail in public, I guess?
Sure we can, yeah.
We can, if, if we so choose.
I just wanna make sure we're stepping out, anyways.
Yeah, I mean, we can provide you guys with what occurred. Um, uh.
There's some things we may want to talk about in non-public.
We asked if that was, um, set in stone. And they asked a couple of questions. We asked them to go back and consider, uh, that item. We also made a recommendation at that time that if that was something that they wanted to have, uh, as a, as a strong point, that we would be receptive to changing the contract to, um, extending the year, adding minutes, um, going to Saturday school, then going to vacation school. We also told them that we would consider switching vacation days to, and Saturdays, meaning vacation would be third, and Saturdays would be, um, fourth option. We also reflected that we would probably look, if we did do vacation time, to do it as a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday days at the middle of the week, rather than have Monday and Friday, so there were three-day weekends. And, uh, and asked them to go back and consider, uh, whether we continued to negotiate the one or, or not. And, um.
In the end, we, we just agreed to disagree?
Agreed that there wasn't.
Had a nice conversation.
Passage to agreement, so. That will be a discussion for the board and the superintendent that needs to occur probably sooner than later to what options we should, we should look at.
We know how, I remember when the board originally discussed this in public, so as the documentation was all public. We were looking to adjust the, I'm looking at the numbers now. An adjustment of, how many minutes a day? Two minutes? I forget, it was maybe ten minutes a day, which resulted in us gaining, say, four or five extra days by the end of the year, if we enacted it on, when we returned from vacation. Is there still time, actually, in the school year to make a dent, I guess, and actually be able to cut out some areas?
Maybe it would have been extended even further now.
Maybe stay further, okay. Well, there, there are two situations. One is a situation on negotiations. And, and, you know, uh, I think it was fruitful talk, but, but we didn't end up with an agreement. And the other thing that we're left with is the collective bargaining agreement and the board administration's rights to address, uh, with the existing language. The existing language calls for the, a sequence of, of events, uh, extending the school year. Second is Saturday school. Third is extending school hours. And fourth is Saturdays, uh, but not Saturdays involved as the Friday day, the start or the end of the vacation period. So, there is language as to how the board can proceed, or decide to proceed, or, or, or not. But we would be working within those, the frame, within that framework, not within, uh, a newly adopted framework based on a cyber agreement. And that's actually the next agenda item, I think, is, is where are we, update on where we are in the school year and points to consider.
So, it's looking like it's gonna be pretty warm towards the end of the year.
Yeah, I mean, I'd just say I'd encourage both parties to figure out how to work through this quickly, because it's students that get impacted here.
Yeah. Right now, we're out to June twenty-fifth, right?
It's really unfortunate.
June twenty-fifth is our last day now, right?
Well, it's the next agenda item.
Sorry, get ahead.
As of now, negotiations on a change to procedures is, are, are done. And we haven't talked about when we might open those conversations up again. But as I say, it doesn't mean that the board can't decide to do something within the existing collective bargaining.
Yep.
There's a discussion at the next board after the next election. The board needs to come, uh, have a discussion of how they're going to begin to recognize their school year. Are they gonna look to recognize their school year as a hundred-and-eighty days? Are they gonna begin to look at their school year as hour-based? If they're gonna begin to look at it as an hour-based, then, um, uh, we are going to have to come to some agreement with the LEA, because again, LMS, two of the grades at LMS are, are greatly impacted by not having enough hours if we have, uh, if we have snow. You know, our, we, we're somewhat of an agreement of hours first, days at the end of the year, Saturdays, and then, uh, vacation. I think we were, I think we were in agreement on how that, that process would have been laid out. But since we're under a contract of a hundred-and-eighty days, the expectation from the school board is that the, um, teachers have a contract to provide us with a hundred-and-eighty days of service and also receive six days of, of, um, what's the word I'm looking for, for workshops. And, um, the question was, what would the workshops look like if they were to give them to us? And they would be workshops that would work on curriculum, you know, of task or project or something that needed to occur to increase the educational process for the kids, and that's how we would begin to look at those. And so, you know, the school board, in, in our present contract, we're a hundred-and-eighty days. So, we do need to have, um, that conversation of what, how we're going to. How we wanna look at it, and then we need to figure out a plan and see if we can get that plan, um, negotiated with the LEA.
Okay. I just wanna recap, just because if anyone's watching at home, I know there's confusion about why is there just, why is it just an issue of seventh and eighth grade? It's because the way the law states it is, grades K to six are required to be in school for nine-hundred-and-forty-five hours, while grades seven and twelve are required to be in school for nine-hundred-and-ninety hours. LMS is in school for one thousand and five hours, have one thousand and five educational hours, which is great for the fifth and sixth graders, but it doesn't leave any leeway for the seventh and eighth graders, because they have that higher standard. Those watching at home, that's the problem.
Exactly. Some of the two fourteen, fifteen school year calendar.
If you look at the two-page document, uh, you will see that we have the original calculation of hours, which is, we pick up exactly from where Mr. Barker stopped. GMS. GMS and, and grade five, six in LMS are required to have nine-hundred-and-forty-five hours, grade, so, and nine-ninety for LMS is actually the seven, eight. So, if you look at the instructional minutes per day, it's three-hundred-and-thirty-five minutes a day, minutes per year, hours. So, for grades, uh, one through six, we have, uh, sixty hours over the minimum. And being over the minimum is, minimum, uh, for the New Hampshire Department of Education regulations, in most cases, are minimums. You probably don't wanna be there in, in, in many cases. And for grades, uh, seven through twelve, it's nine-hundred-and-ninety minutes. And again, the, the scheduling of the middle school is such that, that all the grades, at this point in time, get three-hundred-and-thirty-five minutes. So, that leaves only fifteen minutes a year. With the, uh, late arrivals for, uh, teacher workshop stuff, we're down to one-point-six additional days. So, you can see that, that the other two schools have a significant percentage above the minimum. And grades seven and eight, uh, not so much. So, that's, that's situation. The calendar summary, uh, we built a calendar that basically says, with no school cancellation days, the last day of school for everyone would be Thursday, June eighteenth. And with four school cancellation days, which was, was required to be built into the calendar prior, but now we do, we just continue to do, operate that way, would be Wednesday, June twenty-fourth. We've had five school cancellation days and three late arrivals. One of the school cancellation days was a state of emergency, which we can get waved back, uh, with a letter to the commissioner. The late arrival days, if you look at the asterisk below ED three oh six eighteen, as long as you meet enough days, enough hours in the, the day, all right? And that the day was long enough to begin with, then, uh, you can count the total number of hours that would have been in that day. So, our three late arrival days actually haven't cost us any hours per state regulations. So, right now, we're at the four cancellation days after we, we write, uh, the commissioner with the finish of the twenty-fourth. Now, if you go to page two, that's article eight, section I, work year, um, which I referenced earlier. And I've restructured a little bit just to break it out from a paragraph into, into numbered bullets. First, extending the school year, second, by holding Saturday classes, except in the Saturday, third, by extending the school day, and then as a last resort. So, um, because this is in the collective bargaining agreement, um, we do have the, the, the right as a board and administration to extend the school year, which we assume we're all already doing. Typically, we do that for four days first. Second, we can hold Saturday classes. Third, extending the school day, in which case, at a point like this, if we said, let's add ten minutes per day across all three schools, you know, that would, that would recoup enough time to use up some of those days. We also have a teacher workshop day on, uh, Tuesday, March tenth. And we could move that day. On the other hand, that's very early in the testing window for smarter balance, and we have a lot of things to work out. The first day of testing is scheduled at, uh, for grades three and four at, uh, GMS is the sixteenth of March. So, we had some things planned for that. What we're laying out tonight is, is the situation, and I think two weeks from now, we'll have a much better feel of where we are at the end of the bad weather season and come back to the board with, I'm hoping.
I'm more to it.
I'm more optimistic than you, but, and then come back with, with, with some recommendations. I mean, one of the options is to simply teach out, the schedule as it is, and we finish when we finish. And, uh, how that impacts, if you look at the bottom of page three, the regulations for high school graduation. Now, the seniors' school year can be reduced by no more than five days or thirty hours in instruction, whichever is less from the number of days or hours for other high school students, which I find a little disconcerting, because the minimum is nine-hundred-and-ninety hours. So, if a school that teaches nine-hundred-and-ninety hours, the seniors only have to get nine-sixty. Our kids get a thousand and eighty hours, but because everybody else gets nine-hundred-and-eighty, our seniors have to have nine-fifty. And there's no waving that. So, it would mean that if we, if, uh, if you think of, of that one week, five days, if we finish on the twenty-fourth, high school graduation would be scheduled for, um, June nineteenth. If we found a way to get rid of the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday days, the twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, then, um, high school graduation could then be on the twelfth. Principal Rothos and I have met already. I know she's going to, in two weeks hence, advocate for the earlier date, because seniors seem to get a little antsy in June. I think they're allergic to it and wanna get it out as soon as possible. But in the end, it's the board's decision as to whether to, to, uh, do this. The issue that come up in negotiations, that is, if, if we extend the time, you know, what happens to the extra days doesn't exist when we do it this way. So, for example, if we add time to the day at the three schools, the instructional time actually increases so that while teachers might teach only a hundred-and-seventy-nine or a hundred-and-seventy-eight days, they will have met the total number of hours of, of work. of work and of instruction for a hundred and eighty-day contract with the regularly scheduled date. Does that make sense? So students don't miss any instructional time doing it the way that's in the, the collective bargaining agreement right now. So they just achieve the same number of instructional hours in fewer days. Therefore, teachers have, have fully met, you know, the numbers of hours calculation, but simply done it in fewer days. That's why we don't add workshop days at the end in that situation. So, some conversations in two weeks, which I think would be a good time, and I think an appropriate time, uh, to try and set a graduation date. But I think, once you set a graduation date, you kind of, you know, if there's some bad weather after that, it puts you in a situation, if you, once you've committed to date, you have to make it work.
I think a lot of questions, just not we can get answers to right now. Two thousand and fifteen, eighteen strategic plan.
No, that was a placeholder that we didn't?
It was, I wasn't sure if you were going to.
All right.
And are you approved last time, the school board meeting calendar? No, we didn't.
No, we didn't. I just, um, did this so that I could get feedback from the board. I wasn't sure if you wanted to do anything differently this year. I wasn't sure how budget work sessions were going to go, so you don't have to make any decisions tonight or anything. I just, uh, I'd like some feedback, at least by the next meeting if possible.
Yeah, if you can give us an opportunity to take a look at it and come back on it. Any questions on the manifest?
I haven't seen it.
Everybody's looking, how many signatures?
Not a one. I see too many.
I think Derek's last over there.
I'll leave it open. I'll pass it to you.
Bring us some public input. No one?
Someone, someone.
I will keep it short, I promise. Um, Robin Corville-Fornestment, Cor. I just wanted to clarify two points. One, I heard earlier in the budget from Frank, that there were two maintenance positions, one at the high school, one at the middle school, that have not been filled up to this point. Is it my understanding from the conversation I just heard that they are not going to be filled this year?
Yes.
So the plan is to, to leave the existing maintenance across those two buildings the way that it is?
With the management team in place, I believe it is.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I believe we shifted positions, though. We went from halftime to full-time or something.
No, we, we put Dave Ross in charge of the two schools.
Did we adjust other positions, then?
No, and we put Matt in charge of the high school.
Okay, but, but I don't think that's the question that's being asked. We have been understaffed at LMS for a significant period of time. We have advertised, interviewed, hired.
But she asked about management positions.
The management positions only or staff?
Custodial positions.
Um.
Oh, well.
Maintenance.
Custodial positions are being.
Because I guess that's what I'm looking at, is the overall maintenance and care of the two buildings, not just LMS, but just.
Custodial positions are being, I think, are being filled.
Yes, there's one open position at LMS that we're interviewing for.
We have never changed the custodial staffing. We've had some open positions, but what was discussed regarding the budget next year had to do with the facility directors, consolidation of LMS, GMS, and shifting a person to the facilities director position, which is still the same here.
But the.
The positions are open right now for maintenance you're trying to fill.
Custodial staff.
Yes.
Second shift, yeah.
Yes. That's your ask.
So they're replacing the maintenance staff that was in charge at LMS with a custodial person, is that correct? That they have not hired yet?
But, no, we put David Ross in charge of LMS.
Right.
And GMS as manager, facilities manager.
Yep, I understand that.
And the staff that's underneath them, there's a full staff of custodials for LMS and a full staff of custodials for GMS. Now whether or not they're filled, we did not reduce any of those positions.
No, that's my question, because we were talking about.
No, no, the, the, we haven't changed the staffing levels. In fact, I think, Ms. Markowitz, the staffing levels at LMS are either unchanged or up by a half.
These are up.
The difficulty has been, we've had them posted for a long time. One of the things we're bringing to the board shortly is, is a series of things that we think we need to do with HR and, uh, Director Messenger and, and, uh, food service substitutes. We're in dire shortage of regular teaching substitutes. I know, you know, the, 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 uh, GMS staff have, 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 uh, put that on, on the list of concerns. Um, the administrative teams have been trying to interview everybody who has come, but quite honestly, our sub-rate is, is, I mean, subs usually sub across a lot of districts, and our sub-rate isn't competitive.
But, so here's my question.
We've got subs, we've got food service, and we've got, got custodial staff, where we're just not able to find people who are willing to come and accept the jobs at that rate.
So this is my question and clarification. We had one supervisor at the high school and at the middle school, and say, I'm just taking a guessing number, five custodians. We chose, when, for whatever reasons, to take the person who was managing GMS, put them in charge of LMS, which got rid of our management. Did we then up the number of custodians?
Get rid of your management, it changes the management structure. You still have management at the school.
I understand it changed the, but got rid of that person who was in our building, taking care of business, doing things. It's a different person now, and, and that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking that when we got rid of that person who was physically in our building twenty-four seven as a person dealing with our maintenance issues, did we then add a custodian?
Who was there twenty-four seven?
Not twenty-four seven.
Forty hours was full-time.
Right, we had a full-time person in charge of our building, and I believe at the high school, there was a full-time person.
It was GMS that changed. So you, we had a GMS full-time manager and an LMS full-time manager. We can consolidate those.
Right.
So now you have fifty percent manager in the GMS.
I get that.
Then I think we upped one of thirty percent.
Which is what I'm asking.
Fifty percent, so your coverage is exactly the same.
So, we took the person who was managing the building and we took half of the time from GMS, and then the other half we replaced with a custodial staff member at a lower rate, lower experience, lower level. I'm assuming that's.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, but.
I'm, I'm getting confused.
Here's a simple question.
I'm not sure what's being asked here.
If last year, we had a hundred and sixty hours of maintenance in LMS, do we still have a hundred and sixty hours of maintenance?
Increase your hours of maintenance, custodial staff.
I remember seeing, we gave us a spreadsheet.
I gave you all the spreadsheet, right? I'm not sure what the question's being asked.
And is that position filled?
We have one open position still at LMS.
So that, so for, so that position has not been filled, other than with subs, so we've been just filling in people. Is the plan to fill that position, both here and at CHF?
It's still a position.
So it's still open, that money is not being reabsorbed anywhere else? We just can't find anybody that we can hire?
It filled.
We, we have it filled.
It, it's been a struggle. Uh, I can tell you that Director Messenger has invested huge amounts of, of her time in trying to get a qualified person into that staff, but LMS has been short a full person for some time, and we, and we don't have any, uh, coverage for that.
And is that the same thing at the high school?
The overall allocation of hours, as I understand it, is the same number of, of person hours for that function in, in LMS. If those positions were filled, it would be the same.
So it's like having a full-time classroom teacher in, but we've had subs in there all year because we haven't had anybody in there?
Or nobody.
Or nobody. And is that the same thing at the high school? Or did they fill that position?
They, yes, we, yes, one person left and another person took over that position.
So they're not in the same situation that the, the LMS has been in? They've had a full-time position, we've just had substitutes.
Well, they may have had openings in their, in their custodial staff, but just like everybody else may have had, and then they would have had to figure their process around that.
Okay. Uh, my second question is, when we talk about increasing the day by ten minutes, have we checked to make sure that the bus companies can all do that and that that won't be an issue? So there'll be no impact to changing that?
There are buses, you pay for them.
I, I would assume that that's the way it works, um, but that was.
They don't get to farm themselves out until after they're done with us.
Public government, right?
So we can, we can set our school hours for any time, and they would have to meet that need.
Well, it doesn't mean we wouldn't have to make some type of changes.
But with different, different people and different qualifications.
The first, to answer that part of your question, though, the first step is to see if we can lengthen the day by ten minutes before even, like, deal with the buses.
Right, I just.
It's like building blocks, you gotta do one at a time and.
But there's Robin's point, I think, is that there's, if you can't do that, then why spend the time?
If the bus companies not going.
Check.
Yeah, the, the buses, the buses are there.
So the buses, because we even just, you know, talk about a million different things, just how do we meet these needs? We have late buses, we have different things that, that all kind of schedule and intertwine high school buses and things like that, and just trying to brainstorm things as a staff. You, you can't know what the bus companies, can we mess with the buses? Can we change times and still honor the contracts that we have?
I don't know if you'd call messing with them, but since we write the checks, I think they'd be most agreeable to whatever changes we would need.
You would think, but that was the thing that I wanted to make sure, is that if we did that, so we would shift it, all schools would just shift ten minutes longer, and those bus drivers could have the longer day, and that wouldn't impact any contracts or anything like that.
If we do, it just costs us more money. Frank would have to find it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good old Frank.
Could always find it. Yeah. Spinell and. Anyone else for, um, public input? Nothing, we're going to go into non-public section, RSA ninety-one dash eight, semi-colon three, one, one. The dismissal promotion or compensation of any public employee or the discipline of such employee or the investigation of any charges against him unless the employee affected one, has a right to a meeting, and two, requests that the meeting be open, in which case, request should be granted. B, the hiring of any person of public employee, CMAs which have discussed publicly likely.
Isn't that amazing?
Effectively, the reputation of any person other than a member of the body of the agency itself unless the person requests an open meeting.
Right. Make a motion.
Oh, you don't, nah, you don't think I was up there? I, I, no.
No, no.
Derek?
That was a U-T.